September the fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Calling me to order at four P M. And I ask everybody to make sure their other electronic devices are off while we get into our meeting. And I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda. Or any additions or additions to the agenda, sorry. Before I get the motion. I will do a quick verbal update on our Thunder Bay District Municipal League meeting under councils. Council report. Or councils information, which one you want to go under Louise, doesn't matter?
A report of the appointed members.
Yep, okay, so there, under there anybody else? Hearing none, I have a motion that council hereby accepts the agenda for Tuesday, September the fourteenth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of councils is circly amended, move by.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Jingra.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Any disclosure of interest today?
No.
Hearing none. I have a motion here that council hereby adopts some minutes of the regular meeting of councils that were held on Monday, August twenty third, twenty twenty one, and the closed meeting of councils. Council that were held on Monday, August the twenty third, twenty twenty one, and Thursday, September the second, twenty twenty one, is circly amended, move by.
Counselor Lake.
Thank you. Second. Secondary.
I wasn't there, so I can't.
Counselor Valance.
You counsel Valance, yeah, thanks, I just, I'm listening for voice so that the public also hears rather than hands, thank you. Any errors or missions in those minutes? Hearing none, call the question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you much, carried. We get right into the C I reports, the report on the COVID nineteen proof of vaccination requirements, copy to all members, Mr. Skortinsky.
I'm muted. So based on direction from the province of Ontario, as of September the twenty second, twenty twenty one, Ontarians will need to be fully vaccinated, two doses plus fourteen days, and provide their proof of vaccination along with photo I D to access certain public settings and facilities. This new provincial direction would be at the following town of Marathon facilities. The arena, the Port Hole Pool, the Lakeview Community Hall, which includes the bowling alley and the seniors' club, the Peninsula Golf Course Clubhouse, and the cross-country ski chalet in the winter, the Marathon Public Library, which is a building the municipality owns, similarly, the Marathon Museum, which we own. Individuals who cannot receive the vaccine due to medical exemptions will be permitted entry with a doctor's note until recognized medical exemptions can be integrated as part of a digital vaccine certificate. Children who are eleven years of age and younger and unable to be vaccinated will also be exempted from these requirements. Based on this, all town of Marathon indoor facility users twelve years of age, which is a two thousand and nine birth year, and older, will be required to be vaccinated. And I'm just going to interject there because the province, as of two o'clock this afternoon, just came out with new guidance with respect to youth. And I'm going to read that for council. So they provided a new exemption, which states that patrons under eighteen years of age who are entering the indoor premises of a facility used for sports and recreational fitness activities solely for the purpose of actively participating in an organized sport in accordance with the guidance in Appendix A. The exemption relating to youth under eighteen years of age actively participating in indoor organized sports applies to training, practices, games, and competitions. Examples of an organized sport for which the exemption applies include sports leagues, organized pickup sports, dance classes, martial arts, swimming classes. The exemption does not apply to youth who are spectators at sporting events, nor does the exemption apply to youth who are using a gym or other area with exercise equipment, exercise equipment or weights unless actively participating in an organized sport. So an example where it would not be applicable would be public skating and public swimming. So while they're town activities, they're not organized sports as per the exemption. With that stated, the guidance today also issues that if a municipality chooses to adopt a higher standard of vaccination requirement through a council resolution or bylaw, then that is what stands. So the provincial guidance is just that guidance, it can oversee a municipal decision. So it's fully within council's ability to adopt what the province has provided as guidance with respect to youth, or council can choose to continue with requiring, as in the original report, twelve years of age and older being fully vaccinated to be in the facilities. So Ontarians currently have access to paper or PDF vaccine receipt that includes all relevant information to prove that they are fully vaccinated. Ontario will be introducing an enhanced digital vaccine receipt that features a Q R code. It is expected that this new tool will be available in October. In the interim, administration is currently developing the necessary processes to collect appropriate individual vaccine validation to allow for facility entry while ensuring privacy. As part of developing these processes, enforcement and noncompliance will also be components. This new facility entry usage process will be ready for implementation by September twenty second and will be made available to the public for review and familiarization in advance of that date. Administration is also currently in the process of contacting facility user groups to explain these new requirements and answer questions they may have. That went out last week to all of the user groups. It is a likely scenario where there will be participants within user groups that are not fully vaccinated, in line with other organizations in Ontario, such as the Greater Toronto Hockey League and the Ontario Minor Hockey Association. Administration is proposing that participants in this group have until November first, twenty twenty one, including the fourteen day period after receiving the completed dose to be fully vaccinated and show proof of. So obviously, this report was written before Ontario came out with the guidance that they did today. So financially, it's anticipated that there will be additional staffing costs associated with administering this process related to information collection and enforcement. And administration presents this report for council's information today in further direction.
Thanks for that report, I have a motion here that council hereby accepts attached report recommendation of the COVID nineteen proof of vaccination requirements. And that is, on September twenty second, twenty twenty one, anyone using, attending, or any municipal facility will be required to show proof of full vaccination for COVID nineteen prior to use of entry. And for that demonstration, we will ensure that user groups have given proper notice as in place prior to September twenty second, twenty twenty one, allowing the requirements, outlining the requirements, move by.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Lake.
We got Counselor Valance and Counselor Jingra. And I'm sure I got some hands up, Counselor Lake.
Thanks, your worship, and you know what, I do have lots of questions around, just for folks coming into facilities, what it will look at, but given the segue, I'd say the most important question is to wrestle with the youth under eighteen. Certainly, I was more than prepared to make that a municipal rule, and I still stand by that. I don't think anybody should be coming into our facilities who are eligible for vaccines who have not been vaccinated. I don't think that's a punishment, I really, really believe in freedoms, and they're super important. But with them come consequences. I think you can choose not to be vaccinated, but part of the consequences, you cannot come in to a municipal facility where those of us who have been vaccinated, we need to protect. I think the reward for being vaccinated is access to these sorts of facilities. I'm disappointed that that is the government's guidance, but I certainly stand by the fact that I would support ensuring that anybody who is eligible for the vaccine must be vaccinated to use our facilities.
Thanks, Counselor Jingra.
So just two, two quick questions for clarification, so. I know you mentioned PDFs and paper copies, so I know lots of people have their phones that have the vaccine proof, I'm just wondering if that'll be acceptable? And then if you could just mention for people who don't have access to a phone or a printer, how they can get their printed copies? I know we've got the libraries and option to go print, but if there's any other options for them as well?
Yeah, so certainly phones, of course, will be acceptable. Honestly, that's what we would prefer because we obviously will be buying the necessary Q R scanner once that comes out and using that at our facilities. I, as part of the guidance today, the province I know is working on setting up a hotline for those who can't access the internet or have trouble accessing, as an example, if you have an older health card, like the white and red one, there's a different process you have to follow to get a copy of your vaccine because you can't actually use the provincial portal. So what we'll be doing as the province rolls out that information is we'll post that publicly, so people know. The other thing that we're in the process of doing, you know, based on the outcome of council's decision and discussion tonight, is we're going to be creating a number of infographics that we'll be posting in the facilities on our media channel, so people know what to expect, the questions they're going to ask, get asked, et cetera.
Good, thanks, Counselor Dubushi.
Yeah, I, I think that since we've discussed the protocols or the procedures with the user groups based on the twelve and/or people who are eligible, twelve and older than twelve, I think this guideline is just going to confuse things, I think also we have a responsibility to the general public to do what we feel is best, and I think it is best that we limit the access to the original scope of this document and not take into account the new guidelines, I don't think they're necessary, I think it's an appeasement that isn't for the greater good, and so I don't support using the guideline, I support the original context.
Great, thanks, anybody else? So, so I think summary, the reality is the government always tends to make things much more complicated than need to be. The announcement originally was to have twelve and over, anybody who is available to get vaccines would be, would be going through this process, and all of a sudden, in the last minute, they come up with a change. I agree with Counselor Dubushi, and I think all our counselors are on the same page. We, we go as, if you're eligible to be vaccinated in our community, you have the opportunity to get, get the vaccination, so to have the requirements so wishy-washy and then having confirmation, nonconfirmation, the only thing we're going to be dealing with is the November deadline, as Mr. Skortinsky identified, for the minor hockey, no problem with that. Gives all parents the, the heads up that, you know, your child's registered in minor hockey, you want to play, you better get vaccinated. The fourteen day window after the November the first is, is the one that kind of confused me a bit, Mr. Skortinsky, because I know that it's about the, the, the full benefit of the vaccine, but that's an additional fourteen days, so that November the first will now go to November the fifteenth, correct?
No, that, no, that's not, so it's your second dose plus fourteen days. So if you receive your second dose in mid-October, right, it's fourteen days, and then you can, you're fully vaccinated. So if that date fell on, as an example, November the fourth, you wouldn't be eligible until November the fourth.
Okay, okay, so that's just, okay, that's clarification, but that'll be spelled out to the public so they're fully aware, because I was just considering that as, oh, November the first, I get, so if I got my second dose on November the first, I still have to wait the fourteen days to November fifteenth.
That is correct, and, and we will be hosting a user group meeting in the short term to answer these questions with all of our user groups.
Okay, I, I think that's fully there, and I think all council understands the policy that we're going to be putting in place. And we want people in our community to be vaccinated to the benefit to share all of our community members. And I think Counselor Lake said it very clearly, we're not interfering with your freedoms, you have every right in the world not to get vaccinated, but you also have responsibilities to other members of your community to be safe in a, in a facility that we're providing these recreational activities, so. That's right, so I agree with that, so I'm going to call the question. On this original motion, we're not going to, to mix it up with the provincial's new release today. Based on the motion that was presented today, I call the question with mover Counselor Valance and second right Counselor Jingra, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Carrie, I fully support it as well. Thanks for that report, thanks for that motion, and I encourage all members of the municipality, get out there and get informed by your, your administration or any one of your counselors in regards to the process and why we're doing this, thank you. Up next, we have a report on the mandatory vaccination policy for municipal employees, Mr. Skortinsky.
So obviously, this follows on the heels of the motion just passed by council. Full vaccination has been shown to be effective in reducing COVID nineteen virus transmission and protecting vaccinated individuals from severe consequences of COVID nineteen and the variants. In support of this activity, a number of Ontario municipalities have recently approved mandatory vaccination policies for municipal, for municipal employees, including the city of Toronto, city of Ottawa, city of Burlington, city of Mississauga, and the city of Brampton. The health and safety of the town of Marathon, of town of Marathon employees is a priority. The town is committed to taking every precaution reasonable in the circumstances for the protection of the health and safety of workers from the hazard of COVID nineteen and COVID nineteen variants. Vaccination is a key element in the protection of employees against this hazard. This policy is designed to maximize COVID nineteen vaccination rates among town employees as one of the critical control measures for the hazard of COVID, as one of the critical control measures for the hazard of COVID nineteen. To this end, town employee, employees, members of council, volunteer fighter fighters, students and volunteers, i.e. those that serve on town committees, are required to be vaccinated against COVID nineteen. Given the continuing spread of COVID nineteen and variants within Ontario, compelling data demonstrating a higher incidence of COVID nineteen among the unvaccinated population, as well as the increasing levels of contact between individuals as businesses, services, and activities has reopened, it is important for town employees to be fully vaccinated in order to protect themselves against serious illness, as well as to provide indirect protection to others, including colleagues in the public at large who use municipal facilities. This policy applies to all town employees, members of council, firefighters, volunteers, and students. And for the purpose of this policy, they'll be referred to as employees. All new town employees are now required to be fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen as a condition of being hired by the town of Marathon. There are no financial implications with this report. Options, approve the policy as presented, approve the policy with additional or alternate revisions, or do not approve this policy, your administration recommends that option A be selected, and that the policy, policy for mandatory vaccinations be approved as presented, and further that this policy be included in the town's policy guideline manual. You're on mute, your worship.
Sorry about that, I got some grandkids here and they were making noise. So yeah, I got a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on the mandatory vaccination policy for municipal employees, and that the policy T M S zero zero one five COVID nineteen mandatory vaccination policy that presented, and further that a copy of this policy will be placed in the town's policy guideline and manual, move by.
Kelly Twucci.
Counselor Dubush.
Counselor Lake.
And second, sorry.
Counselor Lake.
Secondary. Okay, thank you. Questions, Counselor Jingra.
So I was trying to find it in the policy again, but there was a section that talked about if employees are, get an exemption for the, the vaccine for whatever reason, they might be required to do testing, is that going to be regular testing, or is that testing when they have symptoms, or what does that look like?
That's, that's a good question, and it's really based on the medical exemption. Because there may be, you know, there's a number of options to consider when there is an exemption, which could include testing. But it also, you know, there'll need to be an analysis completed of where that individual works, to contact they're with, with regards to the public, other colleagues, so it's not a simple, straightforward answer. The simple answer is every situation that has an exemption will be dealt with on its own merits.
Okay, Counselor Lake.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see council included in that, I think it's important for kind of leadership to lead by example, so I think that's nice to see that particular group in there, and I think we are all vaccinated. The one question I had is we've started the process of looking for student counselors. My assumption, given that list, is that student counselors, that will be an additional recommend, or thing they need is to be vaccinated, I'm just double checking that that's the case.
That would be correct.
Yep. Thank you. Counselor Dubushi.
Okay, so in, in order to, employees to, I guess, get a medical exemption, also the question it would be, we would treat that like you return to work program where we develop the criteria about interactions and their proximity to other employees. Is there provisions, or have we discussed with the union about an employee who is against vaccines?
We have not as of yet, we have sent out the policy to the local unions today. We will have that discussion with those unions, assuming that council approves the policy. I thought it was a bit premature, you know, if council doesn't approve the policy, then there's no discussion to be had. If council approves the policy, then that, you know, there's, there's, you know, reason for to have that discussion with the unions.
Okay, Counselor Lake.
Yeah, thank you, worship, so, I mean, certainly, I'll just say, I support the, the, the motion. But one of the things I think about is, you know, given those two motions we're just passing today, if we pass this one, we're certainly, hopefully, increasing the need for vaccination, so are we working with the vaccination group to ensure that we're going to have enough opportunities for people, whether those are held in municipal facilities like we used to do in the arena or set up elsewhere, because it would be a shame if we, you know, sort of promoted vaccination, but then didn't have the, the necessary clinics open for folks, so just making sure that we're doing that, that due diligence.
Yeah, so very good question, and I'll separate the answer out into adults and, and, you know, those in the youth group. So obviously, there, there's different vaccines required for those that are younger. So we will be reaching out to our local family health team regarding those clinics. With respect to adults, be it, you know, those in Marathon or those as our employees, you can obviously book an appointment right now at our Marathon Pharmacy and get the Moderna vaccine, so. There's, there's no reasons, you know, there, there's no reasons or there's no impediments to being vaccinated and meeting those timelines.
Counselor Dubushi.
Yeah, just a follow-up here, because it's, and again, if we pass this policy, I think there are a lot of resources from other communities and some significantly bigger or larger than ours that have had preliminary discussions with the unions, which we deal with as municipal, as municipalities, so I think it's be, are somewhat advantageous if we contacted N O M A or A M O or even those kind of things to find out about the procedures and how we're going to do it, because I would like to see all municipalities following the same protocols, I'll say, with regard to their employees, than us having to fight our battles here, yet the union in Toronto, you know, feels that, or has, you know, agreed to a condition, so I think that, that resource is, should be explored, you know, as well as discussions with our unions.
Yeah, and those will, will obviously happen, you know, this is, you know, when it comes to, you know, employment, this is obviously a a subject that, you know, is, it has many different perspectives. You know, but I think the simplest way I can answer it is, you know, our duty as a corporation is to take every reasonable precaution we can in the circumstances, in this case, it's a global pandemic, to protect our employees. So, you know, that doesn't mean we create exclusions for one or two, that means we ensure we protect all of our employees. And by offering things like medical exemptions, adhering to the Human Rights Code, providing accommodation when it's warranted, as well as we also provide time off for our employees to get vaccinated and to take their kids to get vaccinated. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we're meeting the standard that's required, and to be completely honest, you know, I, I think most of our employees, if not all, will see the benefit of this policy and what it's intended to achieve, which is ultimately, you know, protection for all of us as employees of the corporation.
Anybody else? I had a quick question, maybe it's a little bit in-depth into the human rights, sorry, human resources portion, but in consequences, and I'm reading here in one paragraph under the proof of vaccination, might, might be required to stay home and get tested, but can we see abuse in that system if people don't want to get vaccinated? What is the consequences there, and then will they, you know, I got a sniffle this morning, so I can't go to work, and this continues on, I'm sure there's other things that might pop up through that process.
Yeah, so this, this mandatory vaccine policy wasn't created in, you know, standalone, you know, with respect to our other policies that are currently in place, so, you know, it, it works in concert with those policies. You know, as with any employee going to work, they have to complete the provincial screening every morning. And, you know, if we believe that there's an abuse taking place of either, you know, sick time or, you know, utilizing something within this policy or another policy, you know, we, there are actions we can take to verify, you know, those types of abuses. I can honestly say, you know, that generally doesn't happen as a standard. But we currently do have those policies already in place, which would provide support to this mandatory vaccination policy.
Okay, so follow up on that, so mandatory understanding and getting educated in regards to the COVID and the vaccine, I simply don't want to get it done, what are the consequences?
Yeah, so that's, that's really, again, it's, it's not a standard answer, because it's confidential one, so. You know, the, the policy is very clear on, on what employees have to provide, and, and, you know, what accommodations will be provided based on that information. But again, you know, I feel the number will be very small that we have to deal with, but those will be dealt with on a one-off confidential basis. And again, you know, part of our policy is privacy, so we're committed to ensuring that privacy of our employees.
Okay, good, thanks, so I got a question here now in, in regards to the motions moved by Counsel Dubushi, second by Counsel Lake. Any other questions on that, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, Carrie, thank you very much for that. Up next, we've got a report on the twenty twenty one recreational updates. Is it Ms. Goodchild, thank you, I just see you pop up, thank you.
Yes.
I didn't see you in my list, sorry, sorry, thank you.
That's okay, good afternoon, your worship counselors, so twenty twenty one recreation update. The COVID nineteen pandemic added many challenges with coordinating recreation throughout twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Ontario is now in step three of the roadmap to reopen, and the town has the ability to offer a wider variety of both outdoor and indoor programming. Using the guidelines provided by the Ontario Government and the Thunder Bay District Health Unit, we have planned our programming based on daily statistics, revenues, and public feedback. Staffing shortages have created challenges from a programming perspective, and regular recruitment is ongoing. Facility operating hours have been adjusted to provide public and user group programming based on available staffing. A summary of twenty twenty one programming is outlined as follows. At the golf course, one hundred and sixty-two memberships in twenty twenty one, green fees and cart rentals are available, patio and indoor dining is available, ladies' twilights on Tuesdays and tournaments, and we have a member appreciation tournament happening on September eighteenth. At the arena for summer ice, we had a hockey school which saw thirty-one participants, a three-on-three tournament which consisted of twenty hours of ice, seventy-seven participants from various communities such as Longlac, Geraldton, Scriber, Terrace Bay, Manitowoc, as well as our local players. Tri-Sport, this year, we only had a men's division from various communities such as Longlac, Scriber, Nipigon, and Espinola, as well as our local teams, fifteen hours of private ice rentals, and twelve hours of user group rentals, and forty-two hours of drop-in hockey and public skating. Our regular ice season began on September seventh, and user groups with ice contracts include Marathon Figure Skating Club, Old Timers Hockey, Women's Hockey, Wimps, and Big Tagon Minozu Yagaming, which is formerly, formerly the Pick River Health Center, and Marathon Minor Hockey. Free public skating is offered Mondays and Wednesdays from ten thirty A M to twelve P M, and regular public skating is offered throughout the weekend. The pool opens with scheduling for today. Programming options include public swims, aquafit, and adult swims and lengths. Due to staffing challenges, the Port Hole Pool will be operating five days a week with a two-day closure to start the pool season. The boat launch, seventy-eight permits were purchased, and the fish cleaning station opened on August seventeenth. Programming and events, so we have boot camp and yoga offered twice a week, and private rentals of L C H Gym is available. Penn Lake Park camping is available until October tenth, and to date in twenty twenty one, we've had eight hundred and seven, eight hundred and seventy electrical site bookings and three hundred and seventy-six tent site bookings. Our recreation master plan, so the survey and webpage was launched to the public on August twenty sixth. To date, we have received two hundred and twenty-four responses, and the survey is open until November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Our revenue to date, so Penn Lake Park is seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Summer Ice, seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Our boat launch, four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the golf course, one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That's just memberships, green fees, and cart rentals, that doesn't include the canteen. Administration is presenting this report for information purposes only. Your worship, you're on mute.
I don't normally have grandkids at my house, so they're, they're, they're just a bit loud, as you can imagine with kids, so anyway. So revenues, revenues to date. So in regards to the big picture scenario, uh, can you just give me a quick overview of, of like targets, uh, where we are with the budgeting process and how we've done? I think it looks like Penlake is quite a bit higher. Uh, golf course is probably on track, so you can give us some, some quick overview on that, Ms. Goodchild?
Absolutely, so, uh, all four categories, we've hit our goal. Um, Penlake Park, we've exceeded slightly, and the golf course, we're, we're almost bang on. But everything is, is exactly where we had planned out to be for this year.
Good, anybody else? Counsel Lake?
Yeah, and I think, uh, probably Counselor Valance knows better than anybody, but like, as we look into the future, that, that, uh, staffing issue that you point to, um, you know what, like I see, um, it's hard to get employees, and now we've got a Tim Hortons opening, we've got some, it's great to see the, the growth in the community, but how are we going to, uh, sort of maintain, uh, workers so that we can keep these facilities open? It's great to see them all going, uh, but, uh, how are we, you know, preparing, uh, to make sure we have enough employees moving forward?
So we, we do work closely, closely with our employment agency, with Northwest Employment Works, um, to, to try and keep, um, in, interest and, and people coming through the doors. Um, again, it's just, uh, generally, there's not, uh, there's just not the people here, um, to fill the roles, and there's lots of roles to fill. So we do struggle, um, we are reaching out to professional organizations such as a lifesaving society to have, um, our jobs posted directly with them. Uh, and we're doing everything that we can to, to try and entice more people to apply.
So thanks for that response. I'm going to just ask, uh, with, uh, our Counselor Valance on the line, and Mrs. Goodchild, to, to maybe have some information shared on what's the employment status in regards to the employment benefits being delivered through our community? And what's the, what's the needs, uh, uh, assessment? So that gives us opportunity to go back to the federal rep, right after the election, whoever that might be, and, and say that we have some issues with, with, you know, people getting dollars when there's all kinds of jobs are not being fulfilled. And that might be an arguing, arguing point going forward. So with elections next week, we'll know who that Minister of, uh, Employment is going to be after that, and through our MP, we can discuss those roles. I think Mrs. Korchinsky wanted to chime in with an answer as well, to Counsel Lake's.
Yeah, your worship, I just, I just wanted to, to make a note that, you know, uh, you know, really what we're talking about are operational items, but, you know, from a municipal perspective, you know, we're also highly cognizant of the other strategic items, such as, uh, you know, our housing requirements, uh, which provide challenges right now. Uh, you know, obviously, we're moving forward with the establishment of our 5G network. So, you know, all these things need to work together, uh, to ensure that, you know, we, we have a supply of, of labor that, you know, meets our requirements. The last thing we want to see going forward is, you know, these, these new business operations opening, generation mining opening, and, and it just becomes a, a massive competition, um, that doesn't benefit anybody in our community. So it's not a simple solution, um, but what we're going to work on, and it is in our strategic plan, um, you know, and we'll discuss it with Counsel October, is that workforce development strategy, uh, with all of these economic activities on the cusp of, of happening in town.
Thanks.
Yeah, just a quick question on the recreation master plan on the, the survey. Are we continuing to, to market that survey out? And I know I saw that there was, um, like a online survey. Is there somewhere people can, can go if they don't have access to internet? Or is there a paper copy that they can fill out if they want to get their voices heard?
Absolutely, so we do have it, uh, live, always available on our website. Um, there's a quick link to get directly to it, and then there's paper copies available here at the town office. And now that the recreation complex is open, there's paper copies available over there as well for anyone interested.
Good, thanks for that report. I don't see any other hands. Thanks, uh, Ms. Goodchild, for that report on our recreational activities for the summer, the season so far. Okay, up next, I have a quick report on the Thunder Bay District Municipal League meeting that we, uh, took place on Saturday, uh, the, uh, the 11th of, uh, of September, and the 20th anniversary of the, uh, the, uh, September, the nine and 11 episode that happened around the world. So, uh, the league, uh, did the league business and, uh, talked about the impacts of, uh, of, of the COVID on our situation. We had the MTO representatives, the whole team come in and did a presentation on the highway, highway improvements, uh, shouldering, four-laning, three-laning, double-laning, uh, passing lanes, straining of highways throughout the Northwest. Interestingly enough, um, we all know that from the, from the time we travel on our highways, Marathon and Terrace Bay is identified as probably one of the most treacherous parts of the Trans-Canada Highway, uh, for, uh, recorded accidents and in, in, in involvements of, uh, uh, you know, people going to ditch and, uh, and, and single-vehicle accidents as well, it's not only death. So we, we, we talked a lot about that, but the big thing on the My Radar screen for the new, it's, it's, it's a new team, a lot of new team members within the, uh, district, is, uh, winter maintenance. They have a whole new fleet, Miller Group is now looking after our section highway. They have, uh, seven or so trucks in Marathon and, uh, a new rep. So I got the information's number for our area, uh, for that individual. So we'll be contacting him, uh, if there's any issues with our highways, but I recommend, recommend to all counsel to continue to focus on that. Because it's not just for us, it's about the whole traveling public, our residents as well as, uh, as residents throughout the, the country, the province, traveling through our region. Uh, so that was an interesting meeting. We are going to our December meeting, and we're going to have a spring conference in person. All that's Delta, the fourth phase or the fifth phase or whatever we're in, in New Year, where it comes to, we will cancel that again. But for now, we're tentatively having an in-person meeting, uh, in March. And Noma is also having an in-person, a strategic planning and meeting in October. So it's a start of trying to get back to the in-person stuff. But at the same time, we're very cognitive of the Delta virus, uh, strain going around and had the impacts it is. But again, the vaccine is the big key, and as we just talked about in two different policies. So that was about it. We did, we did talk a bit about the mining, uh, the mining, um, promotion that Marathon is doing. It will affect the whole region. And I brought him up to speed, our board, as the president, about what Marathon is doing. And I'd like just to share with the public as well, if they have any questions about what this, this, um, media and promotion and support for mining in our community is all about. Rather than just talking about things on social media, you should contact and reach out to any one of our administration team, uh, specifically our CIO, he would give you a quick highlight of what's, what's the plan and what's, what's happening in regards to Marathon's support for mining, and also any one of our counselors. Marathon is a mining community now. We were a paper, a pulp and paper industry for many years, some 60-plus years, built on paper laced with gold. We are now a mining community, and we fully support mining. We're fully in, in support of, uh, environmental protection. Uh, but we want to make sure we have an economic base in our community for the future of our children and grandchildren. So I would encourage anybody out there in our community and anywhere in the region, to contact anybody within the town, specifically our CIO. But you can reach out to anybody in regards to this, um, this campaign, as well as anybody in our council, and get the facts, that's all it's about, is get the facts. And we can share it with you, what, what's happening and how our support is being lent to the community, to the company, to mining in general. And we, uh, we will, we'll strive economically for, for everybody in the future with, we can all work together. So, thank you for that. Right into bylaws. Bylaw number 2009, being a bylaw to repeal bylaw number 1909, 1949, sorry, being a bylaw to appoint a municipal bylaw enforcement property standards officer for the Corporation of Town and Marathon, uh, to be read a first, second and third time this, the time, and finally passes 14th day of September, 2021. I need a mover and a seconder, please.
Counsel Lake?
Counsel Valance.
Thank you. Any questions? And I'll ask administration to, uh, to just quickly go over, uh, the individual's name maybe, and, uh, we can welcome her aboard.
Uh, sure, so, uh, after a, a bit of, uh, you know, it seems like one of our themes tonight is, is labor force challenges. So, uh, certainly great to, to have these two bylaws coming forward. Uh, what that this first one is with respect to our, uh, new municipal law enforcement officer, uh, who is good, is Ms. Rebecca Merritt. So Rebecca comes to us from the, uh, NFMC, the Forest Corporation, uh, with a background in both, uh, forestry as, as well as, um, uh, previously a courtroom clerk, uh, so has a lot of experience with respect to the court system, which is a, a great benefit too, uh, working, uh, in this particular role. Uh, Rebecca's also a, a volunteer firefighter, um, and, uh, provides a, a great service to the municipality. Um, and I think will be a, a great fit to our team over here. Uh, her first day was, uh, yesterday. Uh, she has a couple of, uh, days of training this week, and, uh, then we'll, uh, move forward with her training plan. So, uh, great to, to see we filled this position, um, and, uh, I trust that, uh, we found a suitable candidate. Uh, it was a, this was that, we were quite surprised actually with, uh, how many applications we did receive for this position. Um, it was a very strong competition, um, and ultimately, uh, you know, through that, we found a, a very strong candidate. So, uh, welcome Rebecca, and, uh, we have no doubt that, uh, she'll do an excellent job. She's located here at Town Hall, if residents have questions. Um, she'll be happy to answer them and, uh, in due time, obviously, as our vaccination rates continue to increase, uh, we'll be doing more public information, um, with respect to municipal bylaws and, and education.
Great, thanks for that, and welcome aboard Rebecca. Uh, all in favor of that bylaw?
Yes.
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 Kerry, thank you very much. Up next, we have, uh, bylaw number 2010, a bylaw to repeal bylaw number 1762, being a bylaw to appoint a chief building official for the Corporation of Town and Marathon to be read a first, second and third time, finally passes 14th day of September, 2021. Move by?
Counsel Lake.
Good, Counsel Valance and Counsel Lake. Uh, any questions? Again, Mr. Korchinsky, a quick overview?
Uh, absolutely, uh, so pleased that Stephanie Vesna is joining us, uh, as our new chief building official. Uh, she's not a CBO as of yet, she's a CBO in training. Um, she is a building inspector, um, so she'll be continuing with her schooling, um, and her mentorship, uh, to become a CBO. This is probably the most challenging position to find, not just in Ontario, in Canada right now, a certified chief building official. Uh, so we were very fortunate, Stephanie, uh, came to us, uh, fairly highly recommended, um, both, uh, as a professor at Confederation College, uh, as well as, uh, with an architectural background. Uh, so she's already, uh, passed her small buil-, small buildings, um, certification, and she'll continue forward now with, uh, the other components of achieving her, uh, CBO status. So, uh, again, um, it was nice to close off this competition. Um, Stephanie, I think will be a, a great addition, she's highly personable, um, is a, is an excellent communicator. And again, one of the roles that we're going to, uh, build out, uh, with this position is public education. You know, when do I need a permit, when don't I need a permit, things like that. Um, you know, so we have, uh, new additions to staff, um, with new energy, and, uh, there'll be a tremendous benefit for the town.
Great, thanks, uh, welcome aboard Stephanie, and, uh, we look forward to working with both Rebecca and Stephanie in the future. Call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, Kerry, thank you very much. Up next, we have a few motions on, uh, new business. Counsel hereby supports the attached resolution received from the town of Rainy River pertaining to drought management. And further, a copy of this motion be forwarded on to the individual listed on originating resolution. Move by?
Counsel Lake?
Thank you.
Counsel Zingra.
I got Counsel Lake, Counsel Zingra. Any questions on this motion? I see no hands, I'll just read it there for, it's pretty straightforward. The Council of the Corporation of Town and Rainy River calls for the provincial, uh, province of Ontario and Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs to designate Rainy River District as an area impacted by drought and declare an agricultural state of emergency within it, and implement recovery assistance program support for the agricultural sector. And further, copy this resolution be forwarded on to the above signed individuals. As you know, they really had a struggle this year, and I think, uh, with Northern Ontario trying to be more agricultural, uh, not just the Thunder Bay, uh, District, but the Rainy River and the Canora Districts, I think it's a great support, uh, for this resolution. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have a report, uh, and a resolution, and a counsel hereby supports the attached resolution received from the county of Perth pertaining to impact, and further, copy this motion be forwarded on to individual listed on originating resolution. Move by?
Counsel Zingra.
Thank you.
Counsel Lake.
Yeah, Counsel Zingra, Counsel Lake, uh, any questions on this one? So, uh, Ministry, okay, Counsel DeBuchy, but before we do, I want to get clarification to administration, if they understand it. It's about municipalities being assessed on properties for municipalities, what I'm getting, correct?
Well, it's a really wordy document that is actually quite difficult to decipher what they're actually asking, because, uh, in, in one breath, it talks about, you know, governance and accountability of impact, of impact, and then it talks about accuracy and stability of property assessments. So I'm really not sure what they're trying to achieve with this. If, you know, the question to, to us was, you know, what's, you know, what's your service level with impact? Ours is excellent. Uh, we have excellent Northern Ontario staff that are very responsive. Um, you know, so in, and, you know, obviously, you know, the taxation regime in Ontario is, it's highly complicated. Um, and it's, it's not simple to, to change. So, you know, when I look at this, it, it looks like, you know, maybe this, this group is unhappy with impact, you know, as a board, not necessarily, you know, as, uh, an operation, but I, I don't, I'm really a little bit confused on what this is trying to achieve.
Okay, Counsel DeBuchy?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate the fact there. I mean, impact does a lot of things, they're supposed to take care of our voting roles, they're supposed to take care of, uh, you know, the assessments, and we all know how volatile, uh, real estate is right now. So I can imagine people are going nuts over potentially, um, changing in assessments. However, this looked like it was a attack on the administration side of it, more so than what they're doing. So I would suggest we either set this aside or get further clarification, which, if they want to bring it back, because this had, had, in my opinion, didn't state what the whereas or therefore thing, other than it was a kind of a bitch session that everyone wanted to get on, involved with. So I would suggest we just table it or get further clarification, because I just, I'm happy with impact in what they do, I, I think it's important, work what they do, I know it's volatile, but the only beef I would have is the voting, uh, registration or who, who's eligible in the community. Because with all the silliness in this world about voting and the, you know, the, the vol-, you know, if it's valid or if it's whatnot, I think it's important that we keep that hard rule on who's eligible to vote. And, you know, and I think that's important, more so than, you know, complaining about how much they spend on paper clips, so.
Okay, yeah, you're right, Counsel DeBuchy, it's more of an attack on the administrative level of, uh, impact than it is on the actual process. So with that being said, I'm going to recommend from the mover and seconder, uh, to table this, period.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have a council, uh, resolution that hereby supports the attached resolution received from the town of Plimpton, Wyoming pertaining to the rising cost of building materials, and further, copy this motion be forwarded on to individuals listed on originating resolution. Move by?
Counsel Valance.
Counsel DeBuchy, well.
Okay, I got Counsel DeBuchy for the move and, uh, Counsel Valance for a second. Questions on this one? Counsel DeBuchy?
Um, I remember back when the former president was involved there and the soft war, soft wood lumber issue became, uh, permanent or prominent again, and how tariffs came on, uh, that affected the free trade of, between products. So I could tell Wyoming right now that they should look internally before they ask Canada to address the cost of building materials, uh, and our NAFTA free trade agreement. Uh, so in that being said, you know, they have, you know, the resources for themselves. I mean, you can't have it both ways, you know, double tax or tariff, softwood lumber, lumber coming into the States and then ask Canada to do something about it.
Okay, I, uh, I, I get no other questions. I, I know, I know that, uh, basically, we all seen the impact of COVID-19 and the reduction of production of wood and the, uh, double-digit increases up to 60 and 80 and 100% cost on lumber. So I think the resolution is more pertaining to the controls that, you know, we can't be gouging because of the hardships through COVID, even though there was a reduction in, uh, in, uh, manufacturing. No difference going on in the automobile industry right now. You know, uh, used vehicles are 30 to 40% higher than some of their cost, original costs were, and the new vehicles like Ridge because of the chip shortage. So, yeah, I think we can, I think, you know, I, we, I'm going to call a question in full support of this resolution, because there's, if there's some control the government can do is controls on gouging. I think our premier said it, if he knew of a company out there gouging anybody due to COVID-19 impacts, he would take that to a personal matter in himself. So let's see if, if they're going to follow through on some of that. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel DeBuchy, Counsel Lake?
No.
Okay. We lose Counsel Lake? We lose Counsel Lake? Well, I will, I will vote in favor, so there's a, is a moved, uh, motion.
Yes, your worship, it does look like we lost Counsel Lake through a technology issue.
Okay, well, we still have three.
We still have, we still have quorum.
Yeah, we still have a quorum. We moved, so there's, uh, I'm just going to mark four on this resolution, uh, Miss Lee's, just because we lost Counsel Lake. Okay, that being said, uh, there is no other, uh, business of the, the council until, uh, of this meeting, we will be going to a closed meeting of council to discuss, um, acquisition of property, uh, in my little green sheet here. Sorry, uh, some, oh, where'd it go? Here it is, sorry. We'll be discussing, uh, uh, in, in directly following this open public meeting, uh, proposed pending acquisition disposition of land in municipal or local board. So thank you very much. We will adjourn this meeting and go into a closed meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned at the hour of four fifty-one p.m. Thank you, and have a good night. Move by Counsel Valance, second by Counsel Lake. Oh, no, sorry, he's not with us.
Counsel DeBouchy.
Counsel DeBouchy, thank you. Okay, uh, everybody else is off, uh, I guess?
No, we'll just, we'll give it, we'll give it two minutes for people to sign off.
Daryl, you want me to stay?
You can stay. We're only going to be three minutes.
Okay. My notes, my notes will be short then.
Yep.
Very short.